All right, it's 7:00 PM. I'm so happy to see you on this warm sunny summer day. The Board has been in closed session since 5:45 and then we had a special meeting at 6:45. And here we are back to our regular meeting. If you would all please stand and join us, Sam, with our pugnacious.
Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So under Communications, the first thing we have is items of interest from the Board. Any of the Board members want to share? Yes, Ms. Santos?
My kitchen is done. Almost two years without a kitchen.
Because of the leak.
Because of the leak that certain companies and people didn't take care of. But it's done now.
Anyone else?
Live Book was wonderful.
Oh, nice.
Ms. Kendell and I were there.
Must be on summer already.
Yep.
Anyone else? All right. I think I've piqued the interest in the audience tonight with our Board members here. So in May, we celebrated all our certificated staff and our classified staff. We celebrate our staff with employee spotlights and teacher and staff member of the year. Yes, I do not remember Superintendent Appreciation Day. No, I don't. Or Assistant Superintendent's Day. Uh-uh. And I for sure don't ever remember Board Member Appreciation Day. Uh-uh. So here goes with my vision of the resolution for you all. Whereas the superintendent, his assistants, and the Board of Trustees do the hard work to make Luciemar the best school district in San Luis Obispo County. And whereas the superintendent, his assistants, and the Board of Trustees are often interrupted from their ability to just do their job. And whereas the superintendent, his assistants, and the Board of Trustees are rarely, if never ever seen, receiving a pat on the back from anyone. And whereas the superintendent, his assistants, and the Board of Trustees work when they feel lousy, when it's their birthday and others would take the day off, and work long hours when others would have gone home long ago. And whereas the superintendent, his assistants, and the Board of Trustees are essential to the success of Luciemar. Our community is lucky to have you all and you deserve a special day in your honor. I therefore proclaim Tuesday, June 18th, as Governance Team Appreciation Day. Yay! So we celebrate with the four F's. You know, my friends, family, flowers, and a Fresca. So some of the people in the audience have come here to say thank you also for the hard work you do and for the work that is so unseen in our community. It's like the millions of dollars we put under Oceano Elementary. No one ever sees it, and yet a few of us know those millions of dollars are hidden under the ground, that you all make this school district move forward. And our community is so lucky, 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 that we're here every week, every month, wanting to make Luciemar better. And the people out there know it too. So thank you very much. And we're going to take a three-minute break so you can say hi to the folks out there.
Thank you, Colleen.
Thank you. Did you know?
I don't think Chris Handy is coming.
I don't like surprises. You knew.
So sweet.
I know that you knew. This is sweet.
What's that say?
What do you want, Colleen? What do you want?
I'll never forget your presence and your great role. I agree with everything you said. At least on an immediate perspective.
I need all the Board members up there. If you're a Board Member, please go that way.
Everything you do. You know, very, very much appreciate it. The way you do things.
I need a light too. Oh, because I have to take them. Up you go.
Did we surprise you? I said, I'm not so sure. Dare tell you.
Give me a Donna Kendell. Donna Kendell.
Donna! Donna!
Do I have Donna? I have Donna. Take it from above because I like. Got it.
Thanks, guys.
I know, because I didn't remember hearing those names. I know we had a long agenda, but sorry.
I know.
Thank you, Colleen.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Colleen. These are beautiful.
Yeah.
What are they?
Very bright.
I don't know how to say it. I don't know how to say the name.
Alrighty, thanks again for joining us and honoring our governance team. We're going to move on to the business of the district. The first item is our Consent Calendar Action Items. Items 1 through 14? Yeah, Items 1 through 14. Does anyone have anything they'd like to pull from those items?
Yes, ma'am. I would like to pull Item 11 and Item 13, please.
And Number 1.
All right. Hold on. Let's have a motion for.
And Number 17 and 18?
No, those aren't consent.
Oh, those are regular. I do apologize.
Consent is just 1 through 14.
I'm just talking 1 through 14. So I have pulled 1, 11, and 13. Brett? I'm looking for a motion for the remainder of those.
Move approval of Consent Calendar Items 2 through 10, 12, and 14.
Second. It's been moved by Stuart, second by Santos, for Items 2 through 10, 12, and 14. Roll call vote, please. Stuart?
Aye.
Santos?
Yes.
Palm?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Jamie Verney?
Yes.
Kendell?
Yes.
Mine? Yes, motion passes 7-0. Item Number 1, Ms. Mayor.
The only reason I wanted to pull it is because I wanted to mention a relative.
Okay.
That's on that list. For summer programs, certificated Davis Listlow, which is my maiden name. His great-grandfather and my grandfather were brothers.
Well, congratulations.
That's the only reason I wanted to pull that out.
Yep. Okay. I'm going to try and group the three together on a motion, so let's see how we do. Item Number 11. Okay, the only reason I pulled this, because so many times sports teams and other things get really recognized, but I want to recognize the Nursery Landscape Team that was crowned state champions and will represent California at the National FFA Convention from Napa. I think outstanding. Anyone have any arguments with that?
Nope.
I don't think so. Okay, Item Number 13. Okay. Approval Tarleton and Sun Inc. proposing to re-foster Jenkins Middle School office? Okay, the reason I wanted this pulled is because, as you see, the repair is going to be done at Jenkins Middle School. And this is for the stucco, the exterior stucco and all that. And it's $58,000, but it comes from the Bond Fund 21. Just to let you know where your money is going to and for. And for the purpose of fixing this school, another reason for the bond. Great. Anyone want to comment or questions on that? Okay, I'm looking for motions for Items 1, 11, and 13. I move we approve Items Number 1, 11, and 13. Second? Okay, I will.
We'll take.
Who said the second?
Yes.
Okay. So I do have a motion by Mayor and a second by Santos, but I am going to open this up for public comment. Did anyone want to comment on any of these Items 1 through 14? If so, please come forward. Seeing none, I'm going to close it to the audience and bring it back to the Board. We have motions for Items Number 1, 11, and 13. Motion by Mayor, second by Santos. Roll call vote, please. Mayor?
Yes.
Yes. Palm?
Yes.
Jamie Verney?
Yes.
Stuart?
Aye.
Kendell?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Motion passes 7-0. Before we get into the heart of our meeting, now that we've approved our consent agenda, I want to remind you a few things about our meeting tonight. There are speaker cards in the back that are yellow or blue. I don't know, I didn't see an interpreter. Do we have an interpreter here tonight? No. On the last pages of our printed Board Agenda, which you can find out in the foyer, is our decorum standards as are stated. And also thank you to our security team. Public comments are an opportunity for members of the committee to address the Board of Trustees in the meeting of the school board that is open to the public. Members of the public are encouraged to address the Board concerning any item on the agenda or any item of interest within the subject matter jurisdiction of the school board. Public comments are limited to at most three minutes and no more than 20 minutes total for one subject matter under the discretion of the presiding officer. The Board will not take any action or have discussion on any item not appearing on the posted agenda, except as authorized by law. This is why the Board does not respond during the public comment section of our agenda. It is important to recognize that opinions and comments shared here are those of individual speakers and may not represent the views of our district, the Board, or our staff. Luciemar is committed to fostering an inclusive, welcoming, and safe environment at our meetings and schools. We respect everyone's right to express their ideas and opinions. All remarks must be free from personal attacks, particularly those based on legal protections categories such as race, religion, disability, and sexual orientation. Our district is dedicated to serving and nurturing all our students, guiding them to become responsible, ethical, and productive members of society. To honor this mission, please make sure your comments avoid profanity, demonstrate tolerance towards differing viewpoints, and exhibit exemplary conduct. Ms. Hapman knows that our students are watching and learning from us at all times. Please be aware that any disturbance or intentional interruption of the meeting is not permissible in accordance with recently enacted law. Excessive disruption by any individual or group will result in the Board President revoking the individual or group's privilege to address the Board. Disruptive participants may be warned and, if necessary, removed from the meeting. We value your participation in the public meeting of the Board of Education, and thank you for your cooperation in maintaining the efficiency, effectiveness, and stability of Luciemar. So thank you. Moving on to Superintendent's Report. I forgot you, Mr. Bossitt, on Superintendent's Day, darn it!
That was quite the surprise. Thank you, President Martin. We are off and running with training for summer school programs. Our summer school starts up on Thursday. We're excited to welcome all the students and staff to do that. We're very appreciative that we had so many people sign up to participate in summer school, but also for the staff who are giving up part of their summer to do that. It's an extraordinary service that we're providing to our community. And last week, we had our final Principals and Cabinet meeting of the school year, and we had an opportunity to celebrate our administrative team with a taco luncheon and closing out a few items of business. And it was a great way to send them off for the summer. And that is it for me. Thank you.
Okay. I got so excited about giving you guys flowers and Frescas. I forgot.
These are beautiful, and this is perfect. Thank you.
Okay, Item Number 15. Approval School Plans for Student Achievement, SBSA, for Morgan High School, Napa High School, Lopez High School, Pacific View Academy, Paulding Middle School, Fair Grove Elementary, and Grover Beach Elementary. Ms. Dixon?
Thank you, President Martin, and I'd like to invite Principal Jennifer Bowen and Assistant Principal Keith Gladhill, as they're making their way up here to report on our alternative ed programs. I just want to say on behalf of the Principals who are here this evening that we appreciate their hard work on creating these plans. They are a labor of love, and by presenting these plans to our school site councils, their ELACs, and then sharing with them, sharing you, sharing them, excuse me, with the Board here this evening, it gives us a great indication of the good work ahead that we have to come in the 24-25 school year. I'm very pleased at this time to hand it over to Ms. Bowen and Mr. Gladhill to present their plan on behalf of the Principals here this evening. Turn it over to you guys.
If I push up, yep, and then down arrow?
Arrow.
Arrow. Okay. All right. Well, first of all, good evening. I am, I guess, joyous to say this'll be my last SIPSA for Lopez and Pacific View Academy. Actually, just drove down the hill and I'm all packed up over at Lopez. And of course, as you know, peeling away to be the principal of Adult Education, so I'll be your neighbor. Wait, which direction down here in the 900 wing?
No.
Yes. So we've been packing and rearranging, and so anyway, glad to be here this evening. Thanks for having us. There we are. We'd like this picture of the three programs that were together, Lopez, PVA, and Adult The highlights from our SIPSA this year, of course, were aligned with the district goals in student achievement, health and well-being, and organizational excellence. Just recently, I shared with Cabinet that we did get our letter from WASC officially already that the Lopez High School mid-cycle visit was very positive, so that was great to hear. We have not heard back yet regarding PVA and Adult Education, but we will share those things as soon as we, as we do. So I'm just going to start with the first little bit here. We're going to highlight in the SIPSA two specific funding sources that are unique to Lopez High School for next year. One is called the Equity Multiplier Funding Source, and the other is CSI. So we received CSI funding a few years back. It was before COVID, and we were able to stretch that money out a little bit longer because of the school closures. And we focused a lot on our PBIS systems at Lopez High School, positive interventions, as well as our systems for supports and things when students need that added, sometimes consequence, but things that we're doing, trying to do on the campus. And that has been a huge part of my work, I would say, at Lopez. I'm excited to see where PVA and Lopez goes now with the work with PLC. Yeah. All right, so I'll let Keith take it from here.
Hi, Keith Gladhill, the Assistant Principal at Lopez and Pacific View Academy, soon to be the Principal at Lopez and Pacific View Academy. So thank you again for that honor, everyone. So Jen had a few spoiler alerts there, but the Equity Multiplier funding is very unique to Lopez. In fact, it's in the District LCAP as well, specifying that Lopez is going to take advantage of a lot of these funds. And Lopez qualifies for that due to its non-stability rate being pretty high and its social economical disadvantaged students rate being very high. So we're hoping to do great things with that, and I'll highlight those in just a minute. And then also the CSI funding for lower-performing schools. So first, we would like to highlight something we're very proud of. District-wide, we're doing PLC work, of course, but we're going to use some of that funding. And thank you again, Ms. Hillary Dixon. We searched and searched, and we found somebody who's going to be a really great fit, Eddie Valdez. He's a former principal in the East Bay at Kennedy High School, and he has a lot of experience with singletons, which is schools that are smaller, like continuation schools like Lopez, where you don't have a whole team of English teachers, you don't have a whole team of math teachers, you have one or two. And we're going to focus a lot on English, math, and our school culture. So we're really looking forward to that. He's going to spend that, this is going to stretch out for two years for now, and he's going to come and help us. He's going to come out maybe 10 times the first year and then eight times again in the second year. And he's going to bring his expertise. And one quote that he said that I really enjoyed, he's going to push off the curve, not the cliff. So he's not going to, you know, ask us to do stuff that's impossible or that's going to stretch our students and faculty thin. It's all going to be very doable, and he just seemed like a very charismatic person too. So I know he's going to be a good fit for the school. So we're looking forward to that. And also, we're going to continue working with Kimberly or Kim Bryn. And she did a lot of initial work with Lopez and Pacific View Academy, helping us set up our PBIS system, which I feel is exemplary. A lot of the work was done before I even got there, so that's, that's pretty nice. It's pretty nice to show up and the foundation's already built, right? So I'm hoping to continue with the staff and with Kimberly in this next school year to help refine some of our Tier 1 and then expand upon some of our Tier 2 and Tier 3. So that's going to be a lot of fun. And Kim is beloved by the staff, so it's going to be a warm welcome seeing her again. They trust her a lot. She's pretty sharp too, so looking forward to that. And then last but not least, our student health and well-being being a focus for a lot of this funding. So we've been able to expand our student access to counseling. We had a counselor one day a week. This is for personal MFT-type counseling, marriage/family therapy. Now we're going to more than double that. Lopez is going to have that counseling two days a week, and Pacific View Academy is going to have its own day, which is kind of nice. We don't have to share those days. And also, we're adding a substance abuse counselor one day a week. Excuse me. And also just expanding our counseling groups. We're doing a lot of work with that too. So stay tuned. We hope to report great things happening in this next school year, as noted in our single plan. So I think that's all I have at this time. So thank you.
With that, we're happy to take any questions you may have for either Ms. Bowen or Mr. Gladhill.
Any questions?
I don't have a question, but I'd like to make a comment that as my kitchen was being repaired, the gentleman who came to do my plumbing, he was a graduate of Lopez, and he has his own company now with three employees. Did excellent work. So you guys did a good job as students.
Thank you, Ms. Santos.
Anyone else?
Thank you. Thank you. In regards to your health and well-being, will you also be training the T?
Well, the teachers have, they have been trained in the past, I know, through just their education and working in the school environment. But what would be nice is if we had some more refreshers on crisis intervention, training, that sort of thing.
I would also just add our. Her, she's a behavioral specialist, and she travels all over the country doing PBIS work, but really focusing on what do we do for all students at that Tier 1? And then our Tier 2, Tier 3, we've been refining. So when she comes back next year, the idea is to have her three different days to refine some of the things, and that's where we bring in that teacher training part, too.
Great. And will you be reporting back to the Board as well in your findings or?
If we're invited back?
Of course. Especially the Equity Multiplier funding is part of the LCAP, so that will come back annually, and you'll definitely see updates on the data presented in their SIPSA and perhaps some other time during the year pending the agenda creation.
Any other questions? Well, it sounds like you've got a good farewell, Ms. Bowman.
Yes.
And congratulations, Mr. Gladhill.
Thank you.
I think fresh ideas and fresh people is always good for a school. It's always good. And it was obvious at the graduation that the students at Lopez adored you both. And so I think we've got a good thing going up there, and if you can build on it.
Awesome.
Thank you. I agree with you.
Appreciate it.
Ms. Bowen?
Yes.
I have a Christmas tree for you. Made a comment at the Lopez graduation regarding the Christmas tree and.
Oh, yes, one of the student speeches.
Yes.
Yes.
So I have a Christmas tree. So I have a Christmas tree at my vehicle, and I wanted to give that on behalf of Kate.
Oh, that's very nice. Thank you. Okay. You have it here tonight?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, we'll have to coordinate that.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, I believe one of our students talked about Ms. Nancy, our custodian, who's amazing, and how she, you know, brings a touch of all the different seasons to the center at Lopez, and the kids like that a lot. So, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Public comment.
Anyone else have any questions? No. Anyone from the audience have any questions regarding the Lopez High School SIPSA or any of the other schools? Or work for any high school, Napomo High School, Pacific View Academy, Paulding Middle School, Fair Grove Elementary, and Grover Beach Elementary? They're all in the back that you can look at, and we got to read them all. Anyone? Anyone from the audience? Okay, I'm going to close the public comment from the audience and bring it back to the board.
I have one.
Mr. Stewart?
I just want to thank all the principals that are here and who have been here over the past meetings. This, I know this is, this is heavy lifting, so thank you for the work and the investment in, in the SIPSSAs, and thank you, Ms. Dixon, for spreading these out over multiple meetings. There was a time that we did all of the SIPSSAs at one meeting. So this is much, very helpful. So thank you.
Yes, thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Mayor?
It was fun reading Fair Grove and Paulding since my grandson was a sixth grader last year at Fair Grove and a seventh grader this year at Paulding. I really appreciate all the conclusions from all the schools. That's the part that makes the best reading, is not trying to decipher all those charts and all those numbers, but looking at your conclusions. They're thoughtful, and they really give you an idea of what's going on at your schools. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. I do, this is an approval, so I do need approval of this. I need a motion.
Move approval, school plans for student achievement, SIPSA for Arroyo Grande High School, Napomo High School, Lopez High School, Pacific View Academy, Paulding Middle School, Fair Grove Elementary, and Grover Beach Elementary.
Second. It's been moved by Stewart, second by Mayor. Vote, roll call vote, please.
Stewart?
Aye.
Mayor?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Item number 16 is a report, approval, local indicators for California school dashboard. And I have a feeling you're going to be a frequent flyer tonight, Ms. Dixon, but I look forward to hearing from you on this.
Indeed. President Martin, thank you very much. Before you this evening, you have the local indicator, local performance indicator, annual report. This might look a little different because we used a different template, but the same content as the board has seen in the past. The details that this report covers are the required additional areas in the local control funding formula that are not otherwise reported in the LCAP, which is also before you this evening. However, we do report these to the California school dashboard. So pending the board's approval this evening, one of the next steps we take before we sort of close off this process for the summer is to upload the approved local indicators to the school dashboard, which then shows up when it's released in the fall. State law requires that the local indicators are presented for approval to the school board at the same meeting as the LCAP is presented for your hopeful approval this evening. And I just wanted to highlight a few of the things. You'll see a variety of state priorities that are listed in the LCAP. Priority two discusses state standards and our implementation of them, and we're generally doing well there. We do want to look for improvement in history, social science, and world languages, but of course, we are offering all of those courses. And we look to those frameworks and things to be updated hopefully in the near future from the state. Priority three is a very important goal for the district, which is parental involvement and family engagement. The narrative responses detail some of the survey results that we've had throughout the year. Those are also detailed for you in the LCAP itself, and they include strong feedback from parents about their engagement at school. Priority six discusses school climate, which includes details from our local student survey that we give annually in the fall, as well as a few highlights from the California Healthy Kids Survey, which we'll cover in more depth for the board at one of our meetings when we come back in August and September. Again, strong feedback there. And then finally, priority seven is access to a broad course of study, and this talks about the variety of enrichment activities and elective offerings across the states. All of these things, again, these priorities are represented in the LCAP as well, and we address them with metrics there. These are just a few additional details that the state requires. With that, I'm happy to take any questions the board may have or offer any clarification.
Any questions for?
Just a reminder for everybody, per adoption timelines. We're doing math this year. We also did a little bit of science. Where's social studies in the mix?
Social studies is still a little ways out there. So when we think about elementary school, our next big adoption will be English Language Arts. We plan for that in two years. We have our eyes on, we'll see what happens, but we have our eyes on a really interesting adoption that also has integrated science in it, which is a former elementary school teacher, trustee Mary may know, is a real boon to our teachers to have an integrated opportunity. So history, social studies is a bit further out. We are looking, though, for a bridge curriculum that is similar to what the one that we presented to the board and had approved at our last meeting that will update our materials but not be a huge, heavy lift for the elementary teachers. We didn't find the right tool yet, so that may be something we might be able to bring before you in the next school year. But for a full bore, full bore adoption, that's a little ways out. At the secondary level, history, social science is on a routine adoption cycle because it's a single subject, and teachers at the secondary level usually just focus on that one content area.
Any other questions from the board for Ms. Dixon? Seeing none, I'm going to open it up to public comment. Anyone from the audience want to comment on this item? Seeing no movement, I'm going to close it to public comments, and the audience bring it back to the board for comment.
I have a comment. One thing that stood out to me was the school climate survey and kids who experience chronic sadness, sadness, hopelessness, and considered suicide, and it's heartbreaking to read those numbers. And I, I just want to acknowledge, before I was on the board, there was a majority of the, of the board who were here before voted to increase counseling for students. And I just want to acknowledge how important that is. And, you know, we're talking about kids who have spent, especially high school kids, who their whole high school has been through a pandemic, and they've lost social time with peers, and they have to do remote learning, and on top of all the other things that they deal with. And I just know, having been a teacher in this district, how much dedicated staff we have. You know, the kids can find somebody in the school, whether it's a teacher or a staff person who, who can, they could go to and speak with honest, honestly. And I just, I just want to acknowledge that that's an issue. And I just want to thank the board and the superintendent and the cabinet for keeping the top of mind and serving.
Any other comments from board members?
I would just like to say it's not just teachers and stuff, but sometimes it's their coaches or their music teacher, you know, somebody who's close but not close to them. These students look at them as the extra parent for the parent that is missing. So it's, it's a very important thing.
Anyone else? Well, I, and thank goodness we have the LCFF because that's one way we've been able to pay for it. I did read in some of my reading that LCFF is celebrating its 10th year. So thank you, Ms. Dixon, for working on all those years, I'm sure. And that gives us a little bit more flexibility on how we spend our money, knowing that counseling was a very important item to cover. So I do need a, an approval, a vote on this for the local indicators for California school dashboard, item number 16.
We'll, go ahead, Donna.
I'll move approval of the local indicators for California school dashboard.
Second?
It's been moved by Candell, second by Santos, to approve item number 16, local indicators for California school dashboard. Roll call vote, please.
Candell?
Yes.
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 Stewart?
Aye.
Mark? Yes. Motion passes seven zero. We move on to item number 17, which is approval, resolution A 2324-34, approving temporary borrowing between funds. Mr. Eichberger?
Thank you, President Martin. Each year, the district passes this resolution. It is tied to Education Code 4263. And ultimately, what this resolution allows is for the possibility of inter-fund borrowing, meaning if the state, given the certain budget uncertainty right now, decides they are going to issue deferrals or delays of payment to the district, this would allow the district to borrow between funds and then pay those funds back during the same fiscal year. Or if it was at the very end of the year that something came up, it would be within the next fiscal year.
Any questions from board members from Mr. Eichberger on this item? Ms. Vanier?
Thank you. Have we targeted what fund we're looking at that we're going to?
Excellent question. This is a May, meaning the district has not had to actually borrow funds in, in previous years, very, very recent previous years. This is just if something needed to happen. I have seen in other districts sometimes where they will borrow, say, against cafeteria fund and pay it back if they were having cash flow issues in adult education or a different fund. So really, during the last board meeting, when we had the snapshot, it's in the budget book, it shows Fund One, Fund 13, 14, and so forth. This is if one of those funds was having issues with cash, that this would allow us to borrow between those. However, there's not one specific fund that's identified as where we would borrow from first.
So would we be having a meeting to identify the fund that we're going to anticipate if it happens?
No. The, the resolution itself acts as the, the backup that allows the fiscal department to actually transfer those funds for that temporary period.
Any other questions from the board? I leave, oh, excuse me, Ms. Pham. Has there been any funds that we have not been able to pay back?
I would defer. I would have to look into that a little bit. I would know that it would be a big no-no if we weren't able to pay those funds back. It has been a long time since we've had to, had to actually do any inter-fund borrowing, but I can bring some of that information back.
Okay, so it's kind of like when I was buying my first car, and I went to my grandpa, and I said, hey, if I need to borrow 500 bucks for you, from you, will you be there for me? And he said, yes. And I didn't need to borrow the 500 bucks, but I knew I had it in my back pocket. Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay, great. Any other questions from the board? Okay, going to open it up to public comment. Anyone from the audience like to comment on this item? Temporary borrowing between funds. Seeing no one, everyone still, I'm going to close it to public comment, bring it back to the board for comments. Item number 17. I just hope grandpa's there waiting. He was, he told me he just needed my love. Yep. Okay. Anyone else? All right. Looking for a motion.
I move that we, I move motion, resolution A-2324-34, approving temporary borrowing between funds.
A second?
Moved by Mayor, second by Pham, to approve item number 17. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor?
Yes.
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 Stewart?
Aye.
Candell?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes seven zero. Okay, item number 18 is a public hearing on the local reserve for economic uncertainty. Can you introduce this item for us, Mr. Eichberger?
Yes. This documents our compliance with the regulation or Education Code 42127. Ultimately, it shows that the district has the mandated 3% reserve and that we are not, it shows where there are additional signed funds that are above the 10% maximum reserve, meaning with Prop 98, there's a state funding formula, and there's, they have different tests that determine how much reserves a district can have. For the most recent history, we have been in test one, which requires a maximum of a 10% reserve. This is the official documentation that shows we are in compliance with the Education Code.
Okay. Any questions from the board on this item, item number 18? Seeing none, I'm going to open it up to the audience. Would anyone like to pub? Oh, it's public hearing. Excuse me. I'm off my game. I had surgery a month, a week ago, and I am just trying to get back into it. So I am going to open up this public hearing for, for resolution A 29324-34, approving temporary borrowing between funds. If you'd like to come up and address the board during this public hearing, we'd love to hear from you. All right. Going to let it go for a few more seconds in case a mouse wants to stir and come up. Seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back to the board. We just have the public, public hearing, we don't have to vote on it, Mr. Eichberger?
It, it's allowing the public to see an opportunity of our books being open and transparent and that they have an opportunity to comment.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right, so we're going to move on to item scheduled for discussion, possible action. Item number 19 is approval, second reading, fiscal year 2023-24, Local Control Accountability Plan, LCAP. Ms. Dixon?
Thank you, President Martin. It is my pleasure to bring before you once again the Local Control Accountability Plan as we prepare for next year. As a reminder, this has three parts. There's the budget overview for parents, there's the Local Control Accountability Plan itself, and then there's the annual update to this current school year that we are now quickly concluding to share our metrics and the estimated actual cost of all of the actions in the LCAP. This has been on public display since June 3rd. Since we last spoke about the LCAP a week ago, we've received no additional public comment, so it is back before you as you saw it last week. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions or offer any clarification that you may need and ask for your approval this evening.
Would anyone from the school board like to ask Ms. Dixon questions regarding the second reading of LCAP? Now, since we've already seen it once and asked many questions then. Anyone? Okay, so I'm going to open it to the audience for public comment on our second reading of the Local Control Accountability Plan, LCAP for 2324. Seeing no one, I'm going to close it to public comment, bring it back to the board for comment. Come on, you guys, you've got to come. I have so much work.
It's so much work. And having been on the LCAP committee and seeing it evolve, it is so much work. Mentioned that last week, too, but that's true. And I also noted when I was reading it that there's certain goals that we set, which are a little bit, they may seem a little bit arbitrary, like, for example, you want 10%. You want to reduce your chronic absenteeism to 10%, when in reality, we really want to reduce it. Open. It's kind of a vow to reality there. So anyway, lots of work and lots of thought in it.
Anyone else comment?
I like the new format. It's so much easier to read and understand what's going on, and it breaks it down. I like that. Or it was tedious, just. Yeah, much better.
Anyone else?
Thank you so much. In regards to CTE, wait, so is there anything different that we're offering?
The LCAP doesn't address that specifically. We do have new courses in the next item that talk about CTE, so I could potentially discuss that in a bit more depth there. But career technical education is continuing to grow. The cosmetology program that we walk by when we come to the meetings is the most obvious element of that, and we also have received some additional grants that are not represented in the LCAP that we're excited to explore and implement next year.
And another question in regards to, so we, we partner with Questa. Do we really partner with Hancock as well or not?
We're dual enrollment, is that, we, Questa is our local partner. We have explored a bit in what we might be able to offer in Hancock, because especially our Napomo area schools are physically closer to Hancock College than they are to Questa College. But right now, Questa is our local partner within the county, as it is for the entire county, to offer enrichment college courses for our students.
Right. And thank you, thank you for that. Because I looked at the classes that Hancock offers, and a little bit different in regards to career pathways, so I would encourage us to explore that.
So I would encourage us to explore that area as well. Anyone else want to comment on the LCAP? Well, I will. Thank you for the work. I mean, it's a huge template put out by the state with a lot of very important identifiers that get us the money we need to do the good work we do and really appreciate it, so. I need approval of this. It's been our second reading.
Move approval fiscal year twenty, twenty-three, twenty, twenty-four, Local Control Accountability Plan, the LCAP.
Second. It's been moved by Stuart, second by Candell, to improve, to approve the fiscal year twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four, Local Control Accountability Plan. Roll call vote, please. Stuart?
Aye.
Candell?
Yes.
Santos?
Yes.
Pham? Mayor?
Yes.
Naomi Bernier?
Yes.
Yes, motion passes seven, zero. Thank goodness we have an LCAP. Okay, we're moving on to item number twenty, and this was a lot of the weight that I could not carry out of my car today, the LCAP. We're getting through it. Item number twenty is approval, second reading, new courses for twenty, twenty-four, twenty, twenty-five. Ms. Dixon?
Thank you, President Martin. Again, before you this evening, we have new courses that are proposed for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. These courses are proposed for basically three different reasons. As we discussed earlier in our special meeting, one of the reasons is for visual and performing arts access that we continue to increase over time. You'll see their concert choir at AGHS, studio art at PVA Lopez and Napa High School, and a variety of art-related electives at middle school. Those are not necessarily new, but are newly under the umbrella of CTE. Additionally, there is one course, dual enrollment for chemistry, that is now replacing AP chemistry at the request of the school. And a variety of new courses based on new legislation for special education, based on the new alternative graduation pathway. So the courses have been before you in a previous report, and with that, I am happy to answer any questions you have and seek your possible approval this evening.
Questions for Ms. Dixon on the new courses proposed. This is the second reading. None? Okay. Open it up to the public for public comment on these items. Item number twenty, approval, second reading, new courses for twenty, twenty-four, twenty, twenty-five school year. Seeing none, I'm gonna close it to public comment, bring it back to the board for comment. Anyone on the board comment? Well, I did first reading last week because I was doing important stuff, so I did want to say that I was very impressed with the thirteen courses for our alternative pathway to diploma students. And that's a lot of reconfiguring of things, so I appreciate the effort going in there. And then also just the arts. So happy with Prop twenty-eight and what it's brought to our community because it's in statute. When times get rough, they won't be cut, and that's important to know. So arts are here to stay, so it's great. Okay, I'm looking for a motion for item number twenty, new courses. I move approvals, the new courses for twenty, twenty-four, twenty, twenty-five school year.
Second.
It's moved by Mayor, second by Stuart, to approve item number twenty. Roll call vote, please. Mayor?
Yes.
Stuart?
Aye.
Candell?
Yes.
Yes.
Pham?
Yes.
Naomi Bernier?
Yes.
Martin? Yes. Courses passed, seven, zero. Get to work. No, just kidding. Twenty-one. Twenty-one is approval fiscal year twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four, estimated actuals and fiscal year twenty, twenty-four, twenty, twenty-five adoption budget. If you're interested in reading it while we talk, it looks like this and it's out in the hall. Uh, Mr. Eichberger?
Again, I did present last meeting, but I do want to take a moment to to thank Director Seabert and the Business Department because like the LCAP, the end of the year brings forth the challenges of looking at how much we've spent in terms of the estimated actuals for the twenty-three, twenty-four year, and then what our budget looks like based on projections from the state. We talked about that last meeting, that there is still some uncertainty. However, this is a snapshot and our preliminary budget for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Do any board members have questions for Mr. Eichberger on this budget item?
I just want to, Ms. Mayor, I'm gonna ask a question to clarify for people that may not know. I understand, but when you figure out on page I'm sure pages aren't numbered. Yes, they are. Page fifty-eight, the budget by school site. And we have all of these elementary schools and the spending per pupil, per student is different at every school. How does that happen? What makes them so different? And the middle schools and the high schools?
Uh, so there's a combination of reasons. One, the amount of funding we get at the different levels varies. Meaning at the high school level, we get more money in the LCAP than we do at the elementary level. And middle school, same idea. So the base amount of money we get per student varies. The other component also has to do with the unduplicated amount. So some schools get extra money as it relates to Title One. And Title Three, there's there's extra funds of money to support higher unduplicated accounts for some sites versus others. So the funding mechanism itself from the state varies and the money that goes to the sites, it varies based on that income stream.
And then the size of the school?
That impacts it as well.
And the experience of the teachers, where they are in the?
The salary costs does does vary by the years of experience for teachers.
If you're at a school with inexperienced teachers, that costs less. It's different than if you're at a school where there's a lot of experienced teachers.
That would definitely impact the salaries in the general fund category for sure.
So there are a lot of variables. So when a parent looks at this and says, hey, they're spending that much for a kid at that school and only that much at that school.
That does impact it significantly.
Ms. Pham? Um, can you define for us what's unduplicated meaning?
Excellent question. Unduplicated, there are those classifications that allow us or that count towards that number of students that you can only count once. So when we think of English language learners, foster homeless, uh, low socioeconomic status. These are groups or categorized students with the state where there is extra supplemental and/or concentration fund. And the percentage of those students is calculated not only for the whole district, but also by individual school site based on the students that are enrolled at that school site.
Anyone else have questions for Mr. Eichberger? This is the second meeting, so we have gone through some of the nuts and bolts before. Um, opening it up to public comment. Anyone in the item, audience like to comment on this item? Fiscal year twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four, estimated actuals and fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five adoption budget. Okay, I'm gonna close it to public comment. This is a really important thing. Budget's a huge part of what we do and a huge part of our responsibility. I'm gonna bring it back to the board for comment.
Just to express my thanks again to Director Seabert and and the office to create a budget in uncertainty when we don't have that the state, the governor are still arguing about what the next year's budget is gonna look like and nothing's settled. It's great that we're we're able to do that and still have positive certification for outlook for that and then still come out with our, from our auditors and just with high marks from our auditors as well. So I know there's a lot of obstacles that we navigate in this budget cycle, so so thank you and thank you for Director Seabert.
Any other comments from the board? Ms. Vanier?
Thank you. In regards to your column that you have for total non-personnel, are we looking at contracts when it comes to that?
Which page number?
Actually, I am looking at your expenditures on your table, twenty, twenty-four. So I I just wanted clarification because I'm looking at personnel and then I'm looking at total non-personnel, so.
Are you looking at the LCAP?
Yes.
That's the LCAP. It's a much different document.
Uh, yeah, but the expenditures are quite the same, actually.
Not all our money comes from my own.
Correct, correct. But in regards to the column, I just wanted clarification on the column.
So i- in terms of contracted services, as a general rule, the district does attempt to hire employees first. That is one of the things that Dr. Handy takes great pride in and trying filling vacancies. So the number or the amount of contracted services does vary by year. Contracted services are also going to be tied to IEPs and specific requirements that are things that are beyond what our staff is able to provide. So that that is going to vary.
Okay, great. Yeah, I looked at the column and I am aware that it's kind of different but the same. I just wanted clarification because I was looking at total non-personnel, which I assumed was contract. And then I was looking at personnel, which is in-house, correct?
The the, for clarification, there are also some associated costs. So for instance, total non-personnel, if you're looking at Avid, for instance, that does also include some costs that we have tied to paying for being a part of the Avid program and the per student amount that we have to pay. So there are some of those other costs that are not tied to people that are born of those programs also.
Clarification, thank you.
Great job, by the way. This was big. Once again, thank you, Ms. Seabert. Drive for. And I look forward to seeing what the state decides our money situation is like when we come back after our summer break. I do need an approval on this. It's item number twenty-one. Approval fiscal year twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four, estimated actuals and fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five budget adoption.
Move approval fiscal year twenty, twenty-three, twenty, twenty-four, estimated actuals and fiscal year twenty, twenty-four, twenty, twenty-five adoption budget.
I second. It's been moved by Stuart, second by Naomi Bernier. Roll call vote, please.
Aye.
Naomi Bernier?
Yes.
Candell?
Yes.
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 Mayor?
Yes.
Martin? Yes, thank you. Motion passes seven, zero. Okay, we're at item number twenty-two. Approval, initial proposal for collective bargaining from the CMR Unified School District to the CMR Unified Teachers Association for the twenty, twenty-four, twenty, twenty-five negotiations. Dr. Handy, I'm so happy to see you.
Thanks, President Martin. Happy to see you too. As you know, the RADA Act governs employer-employee relations for California public school employees. And the, it specifically states that each party must sunshine their initial proposal for the public to give the public an opportunity to evaluate and speak to those considerations. So the initial bargaining proposal of the CMR Unified School District was presented to the governing board at the last meeting on June eleventh. No comments from the public were made on the item at that time. But because we have some new members and because we missed you last week, I'm gonna go ahead and review again the district's articles that we highlighted. So Article Nine, class size, the district commits to review Pacific View Academy supervising teacher caseloads as outlined in previously agreed-upon language. Article Ten, evaluation procedures, Appendix C. We seek to update the evaluation language with the updated California standards for the teaching profession. And we seek to, in Article Seventeen, enter into a multi-year agreement commencing on July one, twenty, twenty-four with annual automatic reopeners. And of course, all of this is to say the district is committed to attracting and retaining student-focused professionals by fostering a professional culture focused on high standards, research-based practices, and response service to all educational partners. This is our second reading, and so it is recommended and requested that the board accept and approve the proposal as presented.
Any questions from the school board? Ms. Handy for this. Seeing none, I'm gonna open it up to the audience for public comment on items number twenty-two. Would anyone in the audience like to comment on item twenty-two? Seeing none, I'm gonna close it back to the board for comment on item, on the initial proposal. This is the second reading, so I do need a motion for approval. I move approval, initial proposal for collective bargaining from the CMR Unified School District to the CMR Unified Teachers Association for twenty, twenty-four, twenty, twenty-five negotiations. Second. It's been moved by Mayor, second by Santos. Roll call vote, please. Mayor?
Yes.
Santos?
Yes.
Pham?
Yes.
Naomi Bernier?
Yes.
Stuart?
Aye.
Candell?
Yes.
Martin? Yes, motion passes seven, zero. Okay, we're getting to the meat of our meeting here with item number twenty-three. This is approval, second reading, revision of board policies and administrative regs. Superintendent Fossett?
Thank you, President Martin. This is the second reading of the board policies and administrative regulations. I'm just gonna read a few of the titles so that everybody's aware of which ones we're hopefully going to approve tonight. Board policy fifty-one, twenty-one, that impacts grades, evaluations of student achievement, mobile communication devices, athletic competition, high school graduation requirements, grades evaluation of student achievement, and athletic competition administrative, that's an administrative regulation, the last one, so. They're before your review tonight, and I request that you approve them.
Any questions for Dr. Fossett on this?
I'd like to pull the AR six, one, four, five, point, two.
Okay.
Athletic competition.
Is that it?
Yeah.
Okay. Anyone else, anyone have questions for Dr. Fossett on this item? Some of these were new, including cellphone policy, athletic events. They were good. We took out a bunch of stuff too, so. No questions? Okay, I'm gonna open it up to the audience for public comment. If anyone would like to comment on this item. Item number twenty-three, approval, second reading, revision of board policies and administrative regulations. Seeing none, I'm gonna close it to public comment, bring it back to the board, and I'm gonna seek a vote first on all of the regulations except for the third one, BP six, one, four, five. Oh, excuse me, AR. I'm sorry.
Sorry.
The the last one. So I'm looking for a motion for the first five.
Quick comment first?
Sure.
Great. I love that we're upgrading or updating our mobile communication devices. And my hope is that 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 policy gets upheld evenly at all our sites. When I first started with the district, I was a sub, and we had that policy in place, and it was not enforced. Each site had its own, so I'm hoping that this whole umbrella, because it will serve all our students best.
Yes, I, I'm sorry, I might have skipped over comments, but I agree with that. I think that a trick to any policy is to make sure that the staff at the school has a hundred percent adherence to any kind of policy change. And this regards to using cellphones during class time.
We know what a benefit the calendar was.
Yeah, all students have devices now. They don't need to use their phone to get to Google. They can do that on their device in their classroom.
Can I add a comment to that? So our principals have had the opportunity to process that policy and spend a significant amount of time with it, and they've also processed it with their IOTs, their their instructional leadership teams at their school sites. And so we varied the policy by level, so elementary, middle, and high school, based off their feedback and recommendations. And everyone's excited to implement it with fidelity for next year, and we believe it'll create less distraction in the instructional environment and also less student discipline issues.
Well, if you read the news today, it's coming from Newssum all the way down, that for school districts to really review the access to phones for kids at school, it's too much of a distraction, so, yeah. Okay, so we're gonna, I'm just gonna take the first five, comments on the first five, anything from the board? No, then I'll take a motion for the first five.
You want me to read the policies for the motion to make it more clear?
Yes, please.
Great. I move approval, revision of board policies and administrative regulations, BP fifty-one, twenty-one, BP fifty-one, thirty-one, dot, eight, BP sixty-one, forty-five, point, two, BP sixty-one, forty-six, point, one, and AR fifty-one, twenty-one.
Second. It's been moved by Stuart, second by Santos, to approve those five board policies. Roll call vote.
Aye.
Yes. Mayor?
Yes.
Naomi Bernier?
Yes.
Candell?
Yes.
Yes, motion passes seven, zero. Okay, questions for? Yes, motion passes seven-zero. Okay, questions for Dr. Fossett on AR six-one-four-five-point-two? Does anyone have questions regarding that? Comments? We've already asked the audience for comments.
I I just don't agree with one of them, and so I
Okay.
just wanted to pull.
So is your purview and choice.
Thank you.
Okay, so I need do need a motion, and we do need to vote on that, so.
Move approval AR uh sixty uh administrative regulation sixty-one forty-five-point-two.
Second. It's been moved by Stuart again and seconded by Santos again to approve AR six-one-four-five-point-two. Stuart?
Aye.
Santos?
Yes.
No. Mayor?
Yes.
Naomi Bernier?
Yes.
Kendall?
Yes.
Martin.
Yes, motion passes six-one. All right. Okay, we are moving on to agenda item number twenty-four. Approval of compensation increase for classified management, confidential supervisory, and unrepresented employees, certificated management employees, assistant superintendents, and the superintendent. So I just need this, gonna go for it. California Government Code Section five-four-nine-five-three-C three requires that a verbal summary of the proposed compensation and fringe benefits be given to the public prior to final board action on compensation increases for certain employees, and this also must be done at a public meeting. Tonight, the board has considered approving compensation increases for classified management, confidential supervisory, and under rep- unrepresented employees and certificated management employees, including the assistant superintendents and the superintendent. Historically, the Board of Education has approved an equivalent increase to total compensation for each bargaining group, including the management groups. Earlier this year, the district reached an agreement with the CMR Unified Teachers Association and currently remains in negotiations with C S E A representing the district's classified employees. Tonight, the district proposes that confidential, supervisory, unrepresented, and management employees, including assistant superintendents and the superintendents, receive a five percent salary increase consistent with the compensation increases to be provided to certificated and classified personnel. If approved, the management salary inquiries will be effective July one, twenty-twenty-three. Okay, so now we're gonna move on to item number twenty-four.
Nope. Questions? Questions from? Questions, comments, motion?
Oh, questions, excuse me. Thank you for being here. Questions from board members? Any questions from board members? Okay, I'll open it up to the public to comment on this item, item number twenty-four. Approval compensation increase for classified management, confidential, supervisory, and unrepresented employees, certificated management employees, assistant superintendents, and the superintendent. Seeing none, I'm gonna close it to public comment in the audience and bring it back for the board for comment.
Um I I I'd like to comment.
Sure, go for it.
You know, being new to the board, I didn't realize how much work that you all do, and you especially. Um I just wanted to say thank you. You're always on call, and um even on the weekend, I'm sorry. Um so I just wanted to say thank you for taking great care of our students and all the teachers and all the schools. I know it's a lot of work, and I'm just grateful for your dedication. Thank you.
I I will just piggyback on that. I think as a old board member and a new board member, it's wonderful to see for you to see the work that goes into running this school district. And it's not just us up here, but it's from the grounds crew to facilities, to the teachers, to our superintendent. You don't realize there's nineteen schools that this person has to take care of, plus all of us. So at transportation, when things go down, or there's something that happens in a school, and many years there has been different little things that happen, there's always a person you have to go to. So it it takes a team to make this school district run. So we really appreciate it.
Any other comments from board members? Well, I just, I I'm often talking in the public with people who um I keep tuned to what the city councils are often doing, and um you know, our school district, the students and the employees together are more than Grover Beach. But most of them are under eighteen years old. It's like a small city that you're in charge of, but they're all juveniles. And then you have about fifteen hundred employees that you're dealing with. So it's it's a lot, and it's a lot to manage. And not only do you have to keep them safe and happy and fed, but you have to teach them something. And that's our mission, and all those other things feed that education, the fed, the happy, the safe. And it's a lot, and it takes, actually, it's amazing how few of people at the top there really are for how much responsibility it is. It's a tremendous responsibility. And so for all of you, that's, I would rather have given you all a house than flowers and a Fresca, but you got flowers and a Fresca. Yeah, but we do appreciate you.
I'm looking for grandpa.
Yeah. I am looking for an approval on this item number twenty-four. We've got lots of people that are looking for their back pay and looking forward to going home tonight saying that their raise has been finalized. So item number twenty-four, approval compensation increase for classified management, confidential, supervisory, and unrepresented employees, certificated management employees, assistant superintendents, and the superintendent.
Okay, I make a motion of what you just said.
Great. My second. It's been moved by Santos, second by Naomi Bernier, to approve the compensation increase for classified management, confidential, supervisory, and unrepresented employees, certificated management employees, assistant superintendents, and the superintendent. Roll call vote, please.
Santos?
Yes.
Naomi Bernier?
Yes.
Stuart?
Aye.
Kendall?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Martin.
Yes, motion passes seven-zero. On to item number twenty-five. The next item involves approval of the district's agreements with its trustee, I almost got the musketeer bars, agreements with its assistant superintendents and their compensation. These agreements incorporate the increases approved for management earlier in the previous uh agenda item. This is confirmation that Kurt Eichberger has accepted his offer of employment as assistant superintendent business services. Mr. Eichberger will be on step five of the board-approved salary schedule, and his compensation will be two oh six one ninety-seven. Hillary Dixon has also accepted her offer of employment as assistant superintendent curriculum and instruction. Ms. Dixon will be on step five of the board-approved salary schedule, and her compensation will be two oh six one ninety-seven, twinties. Finally, Jennifer Handy has accepted her offer of employment as assistant superintendent human resources. Ms. Handy Handy will be on this step five of the board-approved salary schedule, and her compensation will be two oh six one ninety-seven. Congratulations. Uh Ms. Dr. Fossett?
Yes, thank you, President Martin. I just wanna start off by saying this mine trust is second to none over here. Um and without them, this district could not run so smoothly. Um I'm super appreciative of all the hard work, energy, and effort that they put into every single day, both inside and outside of contracted duty days and hours, um over weekends, over the summer. Um it's a phenomenal team, and I would put them up against anybody um in this county, in the state, in this nation. Um we couldn't have a better group of assistant superintendents serving this board and serving on cabinet. Um we're tremendously lucky. Um so I full-heartedly recommend that you ratify their contracts um as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Questions from the board for the superintendent? Seeing none, I open this item up for public comment. This is item number twenty-five. Would anyone in the audience like to make public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'm gonna close the public comment, bring it back to the board for comments. Anyone like, Mr. Stuart?
I want to express my thanks for all that you do, uh and how you do it so so gracefully, uh going above and beyond. We are very lucky, and we are better a district for for having the three of you in leadership.
Ms. Sam?
Um I'm, you know, going through all kinds of um training and seminars, three, four days, and you know, um up in San Francisco, meeting other districts and hearing their horror stories about their superintendent and their assistant superintendent. I'm just humbled and deeply grateful that you love this district so much to take such good care of it. Um I'm just amazed how not functioning districts are around California. It's amazing. I mean, so thank you. Yeah, very scary.
I'd like to just add to that, that not only are you working for our district, but your own children are in our district, which makes us more proud. So thank you. It's really a tough job, but you make it look easy.
Any other board members want to comment?
I don't know that they make it look easy. It still looks. It still it still looks hard. Thank you for all you do.
Um we trust you. And that says a lot. And um our community's glad and lucky to have you doing the work you're doing. Just like all our principals, all our department heads, we're lucky. Um because to be part of Team CMR takes more than just a paycheck. Takes a lot more, you know? Like I said, coming to work when you don't want to, you do it anyway, so. All right, I'm looking for a motion, please, on item number twenty-five. Move approval of ratification of acceptance of assistant superintendent offers of employment. Second. Moved by Santos, second by Mayor. Roll call vote for item number twenty-five. Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Naomi Bernier? Stuart?
Aye.
Kendall?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes. Motion passes seven-zero. Yay! Okay, item number twenty-six. In accordance with the Brown Act, this is to bride and provide an oral summary of the proposed changes in compensation for Superintendent Dr. Paul Fossett. Dr. Fossett's annual base salary shall be two-hundred-and-eighty-three-six-seventy-eight-three, effective July one, two thousand twenty-four, as reflected in the attached addendum. This addendum incorporates the increase approved for the management earlier this year, this evening, excuse me. As provided by his contract, Dr. Fossett will also receive an additional year on his contract. His new contract term will be from July one, two thousand twenty-four to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-eight. And I want to make it very clear to the community that the board goes through a rigorous evaluation of the superintendent. He is the board's only employee. He is our only employee. So we set goals for him, we assess him on his goals, we meet with him during the uh twice a year to see how we're doing those goals, and then refine those goals. And um one of the things that Dr. Fossett um worked so hard at and did so well with all of us, fours for everything, was his relationships with his um team and his relationships with the board, always keeping a surprise, no surprises, oh uh July, I'm not gonna talk to you in July. I don't know what I'm gonna do. But really, the relationships that you cultivated and the the trust between the board and the superintendent and the superintendent's team has just been so critical, and you scored exceptionally high on that. So um we all feel eternally grateful to how the superintendent, that's so willing and capable, to lead the CMR um forward. Thank you. Anyone else?
I think when you look at other districts who can't keep superintendents, we are very fortunate in so many ways. I mean, I don't ever think, ever remember a day seeing you upset or mad. You somehow, some way, you have that cur- yeah, calming. As Miss Tom is just saying. So thank you so much. You're so appreciated. And the way you treat others, the way you treat people in the community itself, that means a lot because it reflects on us what we chose to to run our district. So I really appreciate that. Thank you for representing us.
Okay, I am gonna come back to us for comment. I opened it up to public comment really quickly. So item number twenty-six is open for public comment. If you'd like to comment on this item, we'd be happy to hear from you regarding the fourth addendum to employment contract for Dr. Paul Fossett Superintendent. Seeing none, I'm gonna close it to public comment, bring it back to the board, because I don't think we have a lot of questions. We just have some comments, right?
Yeah.
Ms. Mayor?
Thank you for keeping us moving forward in our district. Um I've mentioned that to you before. You're always looking for innovative um ways that we can help our kids and help us. Uh and I really appreciate that. And what you said about remaining calm, I don't know how you do it. Because I couldn't do it, but it's very much appreciated. Thank you.
Other comments? Um Ms. Kendall?
Yes, having been on the board for a year and a half now, um I'm really aware of the position of responsibility that I am in as a public servant. And I'm so grateful that um well, as a teacher, I also recognize it was really important that how I present myself in front of my students was important, that it was important that I exhibited honesty and integrity. And it really um, it really makes a difference when it comes from the top. So we expect that, we expect our students to behave in a certain way, and we expect our teachers to model. And you are first among teachers in the district of modeling uh integrity and um and just a temperament to do the job, and so I just
Mr. Stuart?
Uh great. I mean, thank you. I can't believe we're coming up on the fourth addendum already, right? Next year will be your fifth-year superintendent. Um your your service leadership is greatly appreciated, and it has huge ripple effects within this district, so thank you for that. Um you epitomize what it means to be Team CMR, um and I appreciate your commitment to continuous learning, right? That we're never resting on our laurels, and they've all said that. We're we're all moving forward and and learning along the way, so thank you.
Anyone else? Well, I know what the job description says for all of you, but um it always seems like all those things uh other duties has assigned, saying to take over. You can always find someone to do the work, but finding someone who can relate, who can build a strong team, who can attract talent, that can always be found. So thank you for doing that, and thank you for being willing to be with us again. Really appreciate it. Ms. Sam, did you have one more thing to pop in there?
No.
All right, I need a motion on this item. Move approval of fourth addendum to employment contract to Dr. Paul Fossett Superintendent. Second. It's been moved by Santos, second by Sam. Roll call vote, please.
Santos?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Naomi Bernier?
Yes.
Stuart?
Aye.
Kendall?
Yes.
Martin.
Motion passes seven-zero. And now, item number twenty-seven, the big bucks of the night. Yes, yes. Dr. Fossett?
Thank you, President Martin. Uh it's a pleasure to discuss this item with you. Board bylaw nine-two-five-zero provides that each member of the Board of Trustees may receive a maximum monthly compensation as provided in Education Code three-five-one-two-zero. On an annual basis, the board may increase the compensation of the board members beyond the limit delineated in the Education Code in the amount not to exceed five percent based on the present monthly rate of the compensation. The current the current monthly compensation for the Board of Trustees is three-hundred-and-eighty-three dollars and seventy-six cents. It's a whole lot of money for all the work that you do, which represents the base monthly compensation permitted in Education Code three-five-one-two-zero, plus the increases approved by the board since two thousand and four. Under Education Code Section three-five-one-two-zero-E, on an annual basis, the governing board may increase the compensation of individual board members beyond the limits delineated in this section in the amount not to exceed five percent based on the present monthly rate of compensation. Um so in this current cycle, what that means is about nineteen dollars and nineteen cents added to three-eighty-three-seventy-six for a total of four-oh-two-ninety-five a month. There we go. All right, so it's my full-hearted recommendation that the governing board approve this adjustment to the monthly compensation. to the monthly compensation for the board members, which increases the compensation amount again, three eighty-three-seventy-six per month to four oh-two-ninety-five per month, effective July one, two thousand and twenty-four.
Any questions for Dr. Fawcett on this item? Seeing none, I'm going to open it up to the audience for public comment on this item, item number twenty-seven.
Good evening. My name is Alex Hewitt, Labor Relations Representative for the California School Employees Association. As you know, we're still in continuing negotiations with the district, and we have, our next session is on Thursday. We're hoping that we can complete negotiations on Thursday. We're really close to it. Although we recognize that the district's superintendents and classified management have approved their five percent increase today, we're asking you humbly to table this until the next meeting in support of that continuing negotiations and the past practice that classified employees and certificated get approved first before the five percent. So that's what we're asking for on that, is just to see if we can have you guys table this until the next meeting. Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience like to comment on this item? Okay, I'm going to close it to the audience and bring it back to the board for comment.
I have a comment or question. How is it, the fiscal impact here is listed as thirty-three thousand eight hundred and fifty-two?
That might be the total for all of us for the whole year?
It is. It's the increase by month times the seven of you times twelve months for the year.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's not just the increase?
No, it's the total cost.
Yes.
Total cost.
We could buy more spray. This is the math teacher. She was having a rough time.
Divided by twelve, then divided by seven, and it should be.
Our calculator can do that. Anyone else have any comments? I'm going to make a comment. I appreciate your comment, but, you know, our stipend comes effective in July one, just like everyone else. All, we do all our increases July one, and darn it, I wish we could be doing that for the classified employees, too. I need a motion.
Okay, move approval of adjustment in monthly stipend for members of the Board of Trustees.
Second.
Been moved by Santos, seconded by Stewart to approve item number twenty-seven. Santos?
Yes.
Stewart?
Aye.
Kendell?
Yes.
Palm? Mayor? Naomi Bernier?
Yes.
Martin? Yes, motion passes seven-zero. Okay, now we come to the part of our agenda where we'd like to hear from you. This is the item, public comment on items not on the agenda. I reviewed our protocols at the beginning of our meeting. No more than three minutes, no more than twenty minutes on any one item. If you'd like to come forward and provide us with public comment on any item under the school board's purview, we welcome to hear your comments. Mr. Oliveria?
Good evening. I really wasn't prepared to speak today, but I just wanted to share a highlight from last year, last week. As you may know, I'm a retired educator from the CMR School District, and I proudly serve on the County Office of Education now. And last week, we had two graduations, and we had one for the Grizzly School Board Academy, the Grizzly Academy, and then we had the community school graduation. And as you know, many of our students who end up on the, you know, for whatever the reason, expelled from school, end up at the community school. And it's always a big event when we do have the graduation. Well, last week, we had the graduation, and way in the back, I could see a delegation of, of, of staff from CMR. And they were there to support the graduation of three students who had been expelled at one point. We had Jen, who, they were all from Lopez School. That's why I wasn't prepared to share this today, but when I heard and saw the presentation from Lopez, I was happy to share the snapshot. In the back, there was Jen, the principal, Keith, the assistant principal, Kayden, the counselor, and Aurora, the school secretary. They were all there to support those former students of theirs who were graduating last week. And I just wanted to pass that on, because it's nice to hear the kudos that, and the dedication that your staff also brings, our staff. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Juan, for sharing that good news, and thank you, Jen and Keith, for attending. I know how much that means to students. It means a lifetime to them. It really does. Any other public comment on people in the audience would like to share with us? Well, seeing none, I'm going to draw to an adjournment. Wish you all a wonderful summer. Keep your boundaries, July three. And, and let's come back next year rejuvenated and ready to start a great new school year. Thank you for being here tonight.
Good job.
Good job.